Okay.
This is the meeting for the Mobile City Planning Commission for Thursday, August 19th. General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I will announce an application for items where no one from the public is attending. The Zoom staff will give an overview, including any comments received from the public. If a member of the public will attend the meeting, staff will announce their attendance and admit them at this time. Once the parties have joined the meeting, if needed, I will state the commission's rules regarding the number of speakers, as well as speaking time. Each application is limited to a maximum of four speakers in support and four people in opposition, limited to five minutes each. I will then announce the beginning of the public hearing. The applicant will present their case and up to three additional speakers, if applicable. For each speaker, at the end of their presentation, I will ask if there are any questions from any commission members. Once the commission concludes their questions of the speakers in support of an application, I will then call for interested parties to speak. At the end of each speaker's presentation, I will again ask if there are any questions from the commission. The applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut in accordance with commission rules. Two minutes after the rebuttal, I will declare the public hearing closed, and the commission will go into the deliberation session. After the commission has rendered a decision, the applicant and concerned parties will leave the meeting or will be sent back to the waiting room by staff where they can disconnect. I will then call the next agenda item. Commission members and staff, please remember to keep your microphone on mute unless you are speaking to the meeting attending. Roll call on Ms. Denson. Mr. Stubbs.
President.
I'm here. I'm sorry I was muted.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Allen Cameron. Mr. Taylor Atchison. Mr. Matt Anderson. Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Bess Rich.
Here.
Ms. Susan Carley.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Metei.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next have adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to approve adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. We begin with item number one for holdovers. 5,001 Range Line Crossing Drives, PUD. PUD to amend, approval to amend a previously approved PUD to allow shared access between multiple building sites and private street subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I've admitted Mr. Chris Rogers into the meeting. Mr. Rogers, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Right, sir, the floor is yours, staffs.
Mr. Rogers, did you have any opposition to any of the conditions as recommended in the report?
No, ma'am. We do not have any opposition to that.
Mr. Chairman, we've received no correspondence from anyone in oppositions or with concerns regarding this application.
Carlos, I'm, uh, Mr. Gant.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this application? Any questions about commissioners? Hearing none, I'll close the public deliberation session and go into our private session. This application is submitted for approval with findings of facts. Are there a motion from any commissioners?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation, adopting findings of facts, A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, extensions. 871 South Washington Avenue, 759 and 763 Pillars Avenue, requesting a one-year extension. The applicant been admitted.
Uh, yes, Mr. Orell has been admitted to the meeting, and he is the representative for both items number two and number three. Staff received no correspondence or opposition to either application. Mr. Orell, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, is there anything that you want to add to this, your submitted, your request?
No, I don't believe so. I think the, both extensions were allowed for one-year extension, so that, that's all we need to get this done.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak for or against this?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That closes public hearing, unless there are questions by commissioners. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and go into deliberation. Is there a motion for a one-year extension on item number two?
Motion to approve the extension.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the one-year extension on item number two?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? There a motion on item number three for one-year extension? There a motion for item number three for a one-year extension?
A move.
Okay, excuse me, second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the one-year extension on item number three?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passed. Thank you, sir. That's for item number two, 871 South Washington. And item number three, 5456, 5468 Cottage Hill Road, one-year extensions. Well, now, now do our new subdivision applications, beginning with item number four. 6595 Red Maple Drive, Hafa State Subdivisions recommended for approval. Has the applicant been admitted?
Yes, sir. He's been admitted. However, it says he's still connecting to audio, so we'll give that a moment to occur. Um, I can say that we, staff did not receive any comments of, or correspondence in opposition to this application.
Okay.
Mr. Hoffa, can you hear us? It's still showing as connecting. He did not have any opposition to the conditions as presented by staff if he's unable to connect to the, the meeting. He simply wanted to be available if the commission had any questions. But the purpose of the application, there are two existing legal lots of record. He has acquired the, he lives in the home here and has acquired the lot adjoining and will be creating one lot.
Are there any questions by commissioners concerning this?
Under data.
Uh, he's connected. Mr. Hoffa, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, you are now in the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have any, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, did you have any additional comments or recommendations? And is he's in agreement with staff recommendation?
No, sir.
Okay, are there any questions by commissioners concerning this application? Hearing none, I'll close the public's hearing session and we'll go into deliberation. Is there a motion from commissioners to approve the this item?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor of subdivision applications, aye. Any opposed? Item passed. Thank you, sir. Next we'll have item number five, 3725 Hall Smith Road, Eastside Subdivision Phase Two. It's recommended for a holdover till September 2nd to allow the applicant to address some items from staff. Has the applicant been admitted?
Mr. Chairman, I've admitted Timothy Wicker from Mobile County Engineering into the meeting. Um, earlier today, staff sent to the commission a revised recommendation. The county submitted to us yesterday a revised plat which shows this proposed public right-of-way, which has been constructed and is, uh, will be pending shortly for acceptance by the city. This right-of-way connects or fronts with the property in two places, providing the access that the staff was concerned about. Um, the recommended condition was, are now, and you should have a copy of this. It's either dedication of 150 feet from the center line of I-65 or illustration that there is sufficient existing right-of-way, depiction of the 25-foot minimum building setback lines of all street frontages, retention of the lot sizes information in both square feet and acres on the final plat, and acceptance of Sportsplex Drive right-of-way by the city of Mobile prior to the recording of the final plat. Uh, conditions, five are compliance with engineering comments, six, compliance with traffic engineering comments, seven, compliance with open forestry comments, and a, compliance with the fire department comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions by commissioners?
Um, hey Margaret, this is Mark Watier. I'm here with Timothy Wicker. And we would like to request a change to condition number six, and it concerns the curb cut. Um, we would, in addition to the way it's worded with the one curb cut, we'd also like to have two curb cuts onto the proposed Sportsplex Drive.
Um, Mary Beth Bargans in the meeting, and she did not receive a copy of this revised plan. Uh, Mary Beth, are you able to unmute?
Yes, ma'am, I am. And that, that is satisfactory. I was not aware about the pending dedication. I knew it was coming, but I didn't know it was coming in time for this application. And the roadway they constructed completely is prepared for that. So we have no objection to that addition. So if you want to consider the comments to be curb cuts as approved by traffic engineering or just, um, if you want to spell out the two specific to the new proposed right-of-way, that's fine either way. We're very, we're very friendly with the county. We'll help them out.
Any other questions or comments by the applicant?
No, we're, we're good with all the rest of the conditions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from commissioners? And it closes public hearing. We're now deliberation. Um, the application is before you, recommended for approval by staff. Is there a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff revised comments and allowing two curb cuts, um, as approved by traffic engineering.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll have item number six. 7068, 77 and 78, 4 Smith Street, Jasper Johnson. Subdivisions recommended for tentative approval. Has the applicant been admitted?
Yes, I've admitted Jerry Burden to the meeting. Mr. Burden, can you hear us? Jerry, are you there? Okay. Mr. Burden, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we've admitted you to the meeting. This is application number six, Jasper Johnson subdivision, which I believe you have some concerns regarding condition number three.
That's right. Uh, condition three, uh, the dedication to provide 30 feet from Centerline to Smith Street. I don't feel it is necessary for 30 feet. Smith Street was paved with an asphalt valley gutter wing section, which is a less expensive, um, substitute for curb and gutter. But it does accomplish the same thing, which is the rainwater runs into the gutter, flows down the gutter to an inlet, inlet into underground pipes and discharges, uh, somewhere. But there is not an open ditch alongside, so therefore, the 30 feet is really not necessary. It would be the same as the concrete curb and gutter. And that's why I feel like this 25-foot dedication from the center line is sufficient. Any questions?
Any comments from staff concerning that?
I've contacted.
Nick, George, this is Doug. I would like to get Nick's or George's comments on that.
There's not going to be any objection to that. I mean, there's no, there's not going to be any future reconstruction of those streets down there anytime soon in the foreseeable future or probably ever. Uh, I just don't see it. I mean, 50 feet would be standard if we were going to go in with a curb and gutter section, so uh, uh, there's no objection to that.
Thank you.
We'd simply, uh, if approved with that condition being altered, you would need to waive Section VB14 of the subdivision regulations. Oh, Mr. Gant, you're muted.
Any other comments or questions by applicant or the commissioners?
Uh, I don't have any other question.
Anyone else here to speak for or against this? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing session, go into deliberation. Item is before you, commissioners, and it's recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Go ahead, Charlie.
No, you're fine. I'll second.
Okay, move to approve subject to staff recommendation, modifying number three to 30-foot dedication. I mean, to 25-foot dedication.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are we ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed. Thank you, sir. New planning approval, item number seven, 2662 Phillingham Street, Blood Covenant Evangelistic Church Ministries, Inc. Um, I have to recuse on this one.
Is the applicant on the phone, Mrs. Papas?
Uh, yes, I have admitted Ms. Doris Bettis into the meeting. It says she's connecting to audio. Uh, while she is connecting, I do have to bring to the commission's attention um, that, uh, you did receive opposition from Ms. Ruby Malden. Ms. Malden lives at 2658 Phillingham Street, uh, and she is concerned regarding this application. Ms. Bettis, can you hear us? She's still connecting. Ms. Bettis, can you hear us now? Doris Bettis?
She may be muted. Isn't there a, uh, buttons that you have to push on the phone to unmute?
Uh, she's not muted. I don't have a mute sign. Um, it's not. Since we're having a technical issue with Ms. Bettis, Ms. Denson, since Mr. Gant has to also recuse on item number nine, let's go ahead and take that one next. And, uh, we'll see if we can get Ms. Bettis on the phone.
Okay, so this will be 265 and 267 Dolphin Street, the Box L LLC. Uh, staff recommends the application be held over to the September 2nd meeting. Is the applicant on the phone?
I am now admitting him into the meeting. Uh, the two of us spoke at length yesterday regarding his application. Uh, we've received some additional plans, and he went over his additional, I'm sorry, let me get to this application, his additional narrative of clarification. And we feel that we have all of the information that we need for this to be heard at the September 2nd meeting. We just did not have adequate time to tie all these ends together to present the information to the commission for hearing today.
Okay. Does he want to respond to that?
Uh, I will be, uh, the commission, if you would, you do have comments from Mr. Walker. Um, he really wanted it to be heard today, but, you know, I did explain to him that we did not have adequate time to thread all of these pieces together to present to the commission today. Uh, we also wanted to give a revised notice so that, uh, those that receive notice regarding the application have some clarification regarding how this area here is to be used.
Okay.
And he is still connecting.
I had a little trouble myself connecting with the audio. I had to quit and then start over again earlier. I don't know if that would help the applicants.
I can send them something in the chat to try that. Mr. Walker, can you hear us? Or Ms. Bettis? In order to keep the meeting continuing, um, let's go ahead and if y'all don't mind, we'll try item number eight while we're trying to get Ms. Bettis and Mr. Walker into the meeting.
Do you want me to preside or to go back to Mr. Gant?
I think we need to go back to Mr. Gant.
Okay.
Item number eight, 213 Contas Street. Steve Stone.
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Recommended for approval.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, and I've entered Mr. Stone into the meeting. I would draw to the commission's attention the online comments that you received earlier. All of those are in support of the application. However, uh, Ms. Miss Chapman, uh, who entered the last comment does have concerns regarding noise. Uh, she's simply requesting compliance with the noise ordinance, uh, which this approval would still require noise ordinance compliance.
And, uh, this is Steve Stone. Uh, thanks for hearing, uh, the application. The owner is amenable to all the conditions and has, has, I've given him the, uh, the negative comment and, and. the negative comment and he's, he's well aware that, that he has to be a good neighbor and he has been, as it noted in the staff report, that they've never gotten a complaint. Part of it is Gabriel's is right next door and they're a club and they're open till seven or eight in the morning. Obviously, not, not the same owner. So there's kind of a guilt by association, I think, possibly. But otherwise, we're amenable to all conditions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for this or against this application?
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions by commissioners concerning this? Hearing done, I close the public session, go into deliberation. If item number eight before us is recommended for approval by staff, are there, is there a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation adopting findings of facts A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll go to item number ten. New rezoning application. Item number ten, south side of Overlook Road. This is recommended for denial. Is the applicant being admitted?
Yes, I've admitted Evan Burdette into the meeting. Mr. Burdette, can you hear us?
Yes, I will.
Yes, you have now been admitted into the planning commission meeting.
Greetings, sir. Welcome to the meeting. Your application is before us. It has been recommended by staff for denial due to some reasons listed. Do you have any additional information or comments concerning this application?
So it's been recommended for denial?
Yes, due to several reasons. Have you seen the staff report, the reasons that there were outlined?
No, we have not.
Okay. It's staff.
That's just the staff, sir. Sir, that's just a staff report suggesting or recommending a denial. The commission has not voted yet. So if you would tell the commission why you think the rezoning should be approved.
Okay, do I even know the reasons why it was suggested to be denied?
Yes, there are four reasons regarding why a rezoning is recommended per the zoning ordinance. Manifest error in the ordinance, changing conditions in the area, subdivision of property makes it desirable to have this rezoning. And none of those reasons were cited in the application as applicable to the development. Additionally, there are other R-three properties in the immediate area and adjacent directly across the street, which are not even developed as R-three, but the R-three zoning is in the area.
Okay, yeah, we were looking for the, a specific site in this neighborhood. And we, the developers have been looking for two years to find something in the neighborhood suitable for this type of development. They could not find land that was for sale. That was R-three zoned. So there was a limited number of sites available for purchase. That was, yeah, that's one of the reasons why I wanted this site. They thought that it might be able to get rezoned because it was neighboring other R-three properties.
Okay, any response to that, Margaret?
Well, I mean, there is. There's supposed to be a need for R-three in the area. There is existing R-three in the area. It's just not developed as R-three. But, you know, it's there, available to be developed. Additionally, and I'm sorry, I've got so many things open, I can't. Okay, again, there's R-three developed in, or R-three available in the area. Additionally, the zoning ordinance states that a new freestanding R-three district should contain at least four areas. This particular site is two acres rather than four. So all of that is outlined in the staff report. But those were the reasons why the application was recommended for denial.
Could I ask a question? If to build, like, say, twelve units in two, in two separate buildings, would it have to be R-three or could it be something else?
You would still, because you're on one lot, you would still have to have some form of multifamily development. Additionally, the development with two buildings would require a planned unit development approval. If the, if the rezoning is recommended for approval, you would still have to have that planned unit development application as well.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I, can I ask a question? If I may, this is to the staff. If the applicant comes back with a planned unit development and, you know, that shows sidewalks, dumpster, all the things that you mentioned were missing in the plan, would it be wiser to give that opportunity than to do a denial? Or, because it appears that that's missing from this equation.
Well, what was missing from the staff's analysis is the justification for the rezoning. So if the rezoning does not proceed, the PUD is mooted. However, if this is something that the commission is looking to recommend for approval or to allow the applicant to predict, present additional information addressing, you know, why this application complies with one of those four conditions and also to submit the PUD, the commission could hold this over.
But again. I understand what the staff is saying by the need because that's one of the biggest benchmarks. Do you, is there a need? But it's, it's hard to. I mean, I, I just, you know, reading the report and seeing two buildings, that automatically required. But I, but I understand what you're saying. You're looking at the first benchmark. And you're saying there's property out there that could be developed. It doesn't help this applicant, but there is adequate R-three zoning in the area. Okay, I get that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Margaret, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
The, the two properties across the street that are zoned R-three, you know, they, they look like they're entirely surrounded by R-one. Do we know this, have, have any of the history associated with why or how they became R-three? That seemed, it seemed a little unusual to me that those would have already been R-one to start with. So I'm just wondering if there's some, some other background there that we might be, might be missing or needing to hear.
That's the zoning by right. I mean, that's applied to the land. It could be, it could have been first.
The site across the street, this zoning here was rezoned in, in nineteen seventy-three.
Yeah.
The site over here was rezoned in nineteen eighty-six.
Okay, so it's been, been that way probably for a long, long time.
Yeah.
I will say. Go ahead, Doug.
Go ahead, Margaret. I, I was gonna say, I, I think I agree with Beth on this, that the guy, the applicant didn't get a copy of the staff report. So we kind of caught him off guard a little bit with, with the reasons. I think it would be a good idea if the commission would consider allowing a holdover, giving him either two weeks or a month to submit a putt application. And that way it could be considered with his better knowledge of the reasons.
Yeah, I, I think that would be fair if he was unaware of this. Would the applicant, would you be interested in postponing this to the next meeting? Which would be two weeks from now, or do you like more time to consider this?
Is it okay if we have more time to consider it until next month?
Staff would recommend that because if he needs to submit a PUD, if he's going to revise his rezoning application, he also needs to submit a PUD. The deadline for the September sixteenth meeting was just this past week. It'd be a tough scramble for him, or maybe not. If he could get that PUD application to us tomorrow, we could add it to the agenda for September sixteen. Otherwise, it'll be the first meeting in October. But going back to Mrs. Rich's point, it all needs to be considered together.
And do you think that it would be wise to recommend that he contact people in the vicinity about his plans, maybe contact the council person as well to see whether there would be an interest to wanting to sit down prior to coming to the commission? I always think that's a good idea.
I was gonna say, that's never a bad idea.
Really? It's a suggestion. It's a zoning change.
All right.
All right. Is it common practice? First, yeah, or is this a unique situation in which staff says where there's R-three already there, seems not enough. But that's, but they can't make the people sell them the property and the property is not developed. So is it the norm that you kind of penalize them for not being able to buy somebody's land that's zoned, that's zoned properly?
But our job is to make sure there's a reason to have the property rezoned. And the staff has adequately shown that there is. It, it doesn't help his economics, that's obvious, but it's still property that's there. But, but I think going back and doing an entire application that has the PUD, a community meeting, you know, might make this something than just looking at the fact that there's property out there that's already exists in the R-three, not for sale. But that's not our jobs. It's, it's really the application is, is there a need for the land? And what does his application involve?
Margaret, it sounds like you're gonna need to probably, you would, October, whatever the date of that first meeting in October is probably realistically where, where we'll be.
Yes, I mean, that would, if you're asking me, what meeting should we hold this over to? October seventh, so that way the applicant has time to revise his rezoning application and submit the PUD application within proper deadline.
Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners or staff?
One additional comment, there was a resident with an email in opposition. So a reminder that a community meeting may be in order.
Agreed.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Where can I get your, your staff report on, on the project?
You were provided as well as all the other applicants relate to the staff report, but we will be more than happy to rescind that to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other questions or comments. I will close the public hearing session, go into deliberation. Is there a motion on this application?
Move to hold over to the October seventh meeting.
Properly moved in second for holdover to October meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items held over to the October second or seventh?
Seventh.
Seventh meeting. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number eleven. Group applications, east side of Hill Crest Road, Zogby subdivision. And the zoning request, both recommended for approval. Has the applicant bidet bidet?
I've admitted Evan Bedwell into the meeting. Mr. Bedwell, could you please unmute? Thank you. Mr. Bedwell?
Yes, I can hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your application is before us. It's recommended for approval. Do you have any questions or comments concerning the staff?
I do not.
Are there any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this application? Hearing now, now, public hearing and go into deliberation. I'll take each item separately. So item eleven A subdivisions recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eleven A passes. Eleven B rezoning recommended for approval to R-one. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eleven B passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. If you would like to virtually hand over the gavel to Ms. Denson, I do believe Mr. Walker may be able to hear us now.
All right, I'll turn over the last two items to Ms. Denson.
Yes, I can.
Item number.
Ms. Denson, you're on mute.
Thank you. So item number nine, is that correct?
That is correct.
Five and two sixty-seven Dolphin Street. It is recommended to be held over to September second meeting. Does the applicant have any comments? I know that there was a discussion between staff I know that there was a discussion between staff and applicant yesterday.
No ma'am, no comments. I just want to make sure we get everything that we need for you guys to properly make a recommendation for the September 2nd meeting. From what I understand, the, I need to explain more about an area that we labeled event area to clarify that we won't be moving tables and chairs out of the way. Excuse me, and then I need to, I had Carlos submitted some stuff on my behalf, but I had not properly given him permission to, so I just need to...
Okay. So is there anything else that needs to be clarified for the applicant, Ms. Papas, on any materials or information that he needs?
Based on our discussion and follow-up email this morning, no ma'am, I do not perceive that anything prohibiting this application from being heard at the September 2nd meeting.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else, or are there any questions from the commissioners? Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the application or in opposition?
No ma'am, there's no one else in the meeting.
Therefore, I will close the public hearing and open the deliberation. Is there a motion? Well, this is recommended to be held over to September 2nd. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, it'll be held over to September 2nd. Can we go back to number seven? Is Ms., is the applicant able to be on the phone?
Yes, I'm admitting Ms. Doris Bettis via telephone. Ms. Bettis, can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you, we can hear you as well. Okay, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so we're now in the public hearing for 2662 Philanthium Street, which is Blood Covenant Evangelistic Church Ministries for planning approval to allow a church in the R1 zoning area. Ms. Bettis, do you have any comments about the parking or any of the other issues that were raised in the staff reports?
I understand that we can have six parking spaces and that we can request up to 17.
Well, I believe that based upon the amount of capacity that you stated for the church, which I believe was 67 people, it would require 17 parking spots. But I'm not sure that you could fit 17 parking spots on that space.
That's correct.
That's correct, you're requesting a waiver?
Well, I understand from the staff report that you have a parking waiver in front of the Board of Adjustments. Is that correct, Ms. Papas, that will be heard on the, in September?
That's correct.
So there were some, also, we've heard some comments from neighbors who were concerned about the parking, that would it impact their street parking? So if they were to get the, the waiver, what would be the impact? The impact would be that they wouldn't have to provide more parking on their lot and it would therefore then be on-street parking?
Well, there's nowhere, you know, there's nowhere else for, for them to park. The neighbor that submitted her concerns resides here. The site in question is here. As you stated, 17 spaces are required. However, only six are able to be provided on the site.
Ms. Bettis, have you met with the neighbors surrounding this property to, to talk with them about your plans or to talk about the parking issues?
Not to talk about the parking issues, only two that we really talked with, the two on each side of the building, I mean, on the lot, on either side of the building, where we sit in the middle.
Are those both single-family residential houses on either side? From the aerial photo, it looks like the house on the left may have a large parking lot of some sort. And, or is it just, I'm just curious if that's something other than a, than a, than a house?
It's a big lot across the street that, next door is two residential areas.
Okay, so the houses on both, on both sides of the lot are single-family residential homes?
Correct.
Does the, any other commissioners have any thoughts or questions?
Margaret, would it, would it be appropriate, more appropriate for us probably to wait until the zoning variance is considered? I mean, it's, kind of, if that's not allowed, then, with parking, the parking variance, if that's not allowed, it seems to be that it would kind of must be a moot point.
The commission would like to defer this until the variance is heard. The application will be heard by the board at their September, I believe, 13th meeting. So the commission could hold this over to the 16th, which would not cause a delay in their timeline because once the application is heard by the board, there's a 15-day appeal period.
Would the applicant be objectionable to us holding it over to the September 16th meeting?
Ms. Bettis, we're discussing holding over your application to the September 16th meeting. Is, would that be alright with you, so we can wait and see what the Board of Adjustment says?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Anyone else here to speak for or against the application?
No ma'am.
We will close the public hearing and we will move to deliberation. Is there a motion?
Move to holdover until September 16th.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes to holdover until September 16th, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Denson, we have nothing else to cover under the, on the agenda and no other business to provide. I will say, right now, we are looking for the September 2nd meeting to continue to be the zen.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask, do we have a timeframe on how long we'll run virtual? Not that this didn't go great, we, we jumped right back in the saddle, so...
Well, thank you. It, it's going to depend on, you know, what is going on in our community and also what allows this is the governor's proclamation from last week and it was a little open-ended. So we can only do this as allowed by the governor's proclamation or orders from the state health officer.
It'll probably be until the numbers come down in the hospital because they're overwhelmed right now with the need for beds and an ER staff. I mean, it's, it's a cluster everywhere. So they're, they're really trying to separate people so that we don't all cross-contaminate each other.
Just looking at the, at the dates on my calendar, I don't have the future dates in front of me, but we're looking at September 2nd, September 16th, potentially September 30th.
No, no, first or third.
Sorry, sorry. Just make sure applicants and anyone else knows how to access virtually and access reports and...
Yes.
Be advised.
Yes. We had a bit of, you know, getting the word out for this, for this meeting. However, the notices that are being prepared for the next meetings are, are doing it for virtual.
So should I adjourn the meeting or does Mr. Gant need to come back and do that?
Me and the adjourn.